All right, I'm going to 10 o'clock. We're going to hit call this meeting to order.
Okay, so we follow what you think for this beautiful body. We thank you for lending that a country where we gather and worship you. And we ask you bless this meeting, made the decisions later that be pleasing unto you. Ask you go with each and every family member represented here today, keep them safe and well. Arms wide in your precious name we pray.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our equal, liberty and justice for all, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and visible.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming. We did have some visitors that will be hanging out with us later after. I've invited them to stay since they're being represented as well and giving a bid with us. So at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each group will be limited to three minutes. All right, no takers. Need batteries?
Memory's full.
Oh, okay. Court to discuss and consider increasing project schedule and staffing.
We're in the third of the call soon.
Got the students put up on the road. Did that air check?
Yes. Were they the kind of bolted this round? I talked to Carrie Hart. She asked if y'all had finished calling and said that y'all had. She said there's excess. I asked if we could have those for the welcome girl. She said that we could, so I may be asking for some assistance in the next little bit to help get those over there. So I will talk to y'all about it at the next meeting.
Also, I was just putting out some forms for our grant. And I noticed that our water traders are not being represented possibly at the best rate for 2021. The rates have gone a little bit different. The number we had been using was like for a two or three thousand gallons. And our transports are like five thousand. Worth that, five thousand four hundred and sixty gallons. And so if you need to use that number, if you want that number, we'll give you a holler after a while and I'll give it to you if you're using that.
We need to update because I think mine is seven thousand because it's a milk curd.
Yes. Also, if you use the zipper part of the grant, I've got a number for that as well. There's nothing in there for milling machines that I found whatsoever. So I used Escalator that is approximately horsepower. So that's all the I do to do.
That's ones I submitted in there for a bit, so.
Yes. All right, we'll go ahead and conduct a public hearing on placing the placement of speed limit signs on County Road 267 in Precinct 2. And we'll start that at 10:03. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, we're trying to slow the trucks down. The speed limit's 60 there, but I want to slow the trucks down to 45 because they're going 80 miles an hour. Leave the car traffic this thing. I just want to try to get the trucks to slow down.
Cool.
They don't slow down if you work on the road either. We found that out.
You can also utilize, you probably have DPS. I call them and they go out and they help us out, get them slowed down a little bit, but you're right.
I've done that. I've talked to a couple of days.
They've got space there.
Yeah.
Because as long as they're there, they'll slow down. Then they go right back to their old ways.
So you have two different speed limit signs, one for cars and one that says trucks.
Yeah, I'm going to put the car speed limit and then I need to, I'll put the truck speed limit on.
What was the speed limit for cars and what was the speed limit for trucks that you're trying to?
60 is current and what it would be for cars and 45 for trucks.
Okay, so cars will remain at 60 and trucks will go down to 45.
No more discussion. We'll go to the enclosed public hearing. Court to consider placement of speed limit signs on County Road 267, Precinct 2.
Like the motion, we will. Commissioner Scott, place the speed limit signs as he presented on County Road 267.
All in favor? All right, court to discuss and consider setting a public hearing to modify the speed limits in Precinct 2 and Precinct 4 on the following county roads. You want me to list them all? There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21 different roads there.
We can all read.
Okay.
Do we want to change it to modify where specified truck speed limits?
Yeah, when you, when we, this kind of leaves it open so that you can specify. So you want it for trucks, speed limits?
Well, that's what, yeah, we're going to leave the, I'm going to believe on mine, black cop, please move 60 for the vehicles and slow the trucks down to 45. And then on the creaky roads, slow them down to 30.
And I'm going to do the same at all amount of time.
Okay, so. Well, let's set a public hearing, April 11th, we have a meeting for bank depository bids. That's, that's an extra one, so we have April 4th, April 11th, and April 18th. April 11th is, is 30 days, a little more than 30 days from now, so you'll want to set it on that day, the public hearing for the truck. Okay, so who's making the motion? Oh, okay. All in favor? Yes, sir. All right, court to consider going out for bids on fuel, oil, and grease. Talk to one who typically bids, it just got missed, someone dropped the ball. So do we want to go back out for bids?
Judge, I make a motion to answer.
Same day, same day, April 11th. All in favor? Court to discuss and consider executing documents for subdivision participation in release form in the opioid litigation. You have most of that in your packet. I handed out the amounts that skirted county to get in these different settlements. One is with Allergan, I think that's right, A-L-L-E-R-D-A-N, $9,814.92. CVS, $22,060.30. Walgreens, $24,684.36. Walmart, $12,340.69. And I did the math on that before and it's like 75,000, something like that, 78,000, something like that. Estimated for what Region 12 would get is Allergan is 2.7 million, CVS is 6 million, Walgreens 6.8 million, Walmart is 3.4. So this is separate from the ones we got before. That was a little over 80,000 on those. Haven't, I don't know specifically what it can be used for, but I think it's about saying the last time it had be on education, on opioids, and stuff like that. Did we ever get that from them, that settlement?
No, I sent the ACH form for this stuff that we just recently received, I sent the ACH form, but we haven't received any of the funds from any of the opioid settlements.
It's been nearly two years.
I think they were waiting on legislation to say where, what it can be spent on. And there's still, I have the legislation now, but it's like on 60 pages long, so it's legislation.
Is this something that you, you can sign up for the court or are we all signing?
I believe I can sign up for the court.
Judge, I make a motion that we execute documents for subdivision participation in release forms and opioid litigation and allow them to sign up for.
All in favor? All right, court to discuss and consider allowing courts to deduct actual cost of new meters from agreed purchase price from the system. So courts reached out and they said that there are several of those lots of meters that don't work. Any estimated cost to replace those, they want to go with the newer style meters is about 25,000. They have asked that. We allow them to deduct that from the purchase price. So an update on where that is while we're discussing this. I asked them about where we are with the Public Utilities Commission. They said we're close. They don't know for sure exactly how close. After we did the ordinance for the sanitary control easement exceptions, I sent that in. December 21st, I talked to them. I've been back and forth with them over the forms and corrections and things like that. February 23rd, TCU expected to have it completed the following week or so. I checked with them this morning and I haven't heard back on where that stands. But that part should be just about done. We're just waiting on the Public Utilities Commission to allow the sale to go through. But back to it, they're requesting to take $25,000 off the purchase price, so.
What was the bid of the purchase price that they had?
Wasn't it 150 to 200,000? I don't remember. I should have looked that up.
They almost started, they would have done that the entire thing, they knew what they had.
They got appraisal stuff.
And besides, they're wanting to upgrade to the newer style meters rather than going back with what's there.
That's all they will.
I mean, unless it's a deal breaker. I can't imagine it would be because like you say, they, they checked it all out before we ever made the agreement.
They knew what they had.
And they mentioned that they were going to do this at that time as well, so. Go ahead, take that as a no.
That's my thing. I think we take no action. I'm actually thinking, thank God.
No, I don't think many, they like I said, y'all, they knew what they were getting into.
So just no action?
No, pass that on to them. All right, court to discuss and consider current copier contracts and consider going out for bids. All right, so I've been looking at our copier stuff for a couple of months now. So it came, the reason this came about is we, good. Let me go back to 2020. So in 2020, we had a different person that was our. We had multiple contracts. And at that time, we were trying to consolidate all of our bills into one bill. You know, like Suddenlink and all of those, so we didn't have to pay multiple bills for different departments. This was one, they said, yeah, we can do that. We can't do all new contracts. They have, we can end them all at the same time, but we can't do one contract. We can't consolidate them that way. So thinking that we're going to get them kind of consolidated to where they all end at the same time, we were up along for a while. And I think it was February, it might have been January. Angela needed all the contracts for everything that we have, so I asked, I reached out to them and asked them for all of the contracts that we have for our different machines. I also asked them for a list. They were able to provide all the contracts, but they weren't able to provide a list. They really had no idea what we had. So once I got all the contracts, I put together this spreadsheet that you have. I sent it back to Visual Edge and they were able to add some more information that I requested. We had no idea what we're paying. To let you know what we are paying currently, it's nearly $4,600 a month, $55,000 a year, $275,000 over five years.
And just to clarify a little bit, the reason, because, I mean, we pay this every month, so we do know what we're paying. But at that point in time, every department had, where like officials signed their own contract for their own equipment. And so you had all these spread out all over the county and all the different offices. So it wasn't all into one deal and knowing exactly, we're copiers, this is what we're paying. So just to clarify.
Thank you. So I, I asked Visual Edge again, can we put them all on one contract? Initially, it was no. I told them I'm going to start looking at other options. And that rotating up to where they all end at the same time, that went out the window when we got a new one. So we're back at square one where five years from now, we'll all, if we stay with what we have, five years from now, we'll all end up contracts ending at the same time. We have 19 contracts for 21 machines throughout the county. So I reached out to another company. Asked them to give me an idea of what it would cost. So they could buy out most of them. There's four they wouldn't be able to buy out because they're too, too new. They would buy those out at 60,000. There'd be the other four remaining, which would be 802. So then I asked him, how much would it cost to buy out all of them? What the payments would be? 3,488 dollars a month. And then our print costs at, every machine has a different print cost for black, black and white and for color. They would set one print price for all machines at penny per print for color and seven cents for, I'm sorry, for black and white and then seven cents for color. And that would be about 108 dollars a month. We print about 60,000 black and white and about 10,000 color a year. There's probably more information than y'all want to know. But the total price per month would be 3,596 dollars. For a year, it'd be 43,000. Five years, it's 215,000. And just to perspective, what we're currently doing is 4,500 a month, 4,600 a month, 55,000 a year, 275,000 over five years. So it's a $60,000 difference over five years. Visual Edge did come back and say that they could consolidate, put them all in one contract. Before, when they were benchmark, they couldn't do it. Now that they're Visual Edge, they have people that have done that before, so. Keep in mind, 3,500 for advanced. Visual Edge is 4,300 a month, 4,371 a month, 52,5 a year, 262,000 over five years. The benefits of doing the contract, so what I'm getting at is we can either stay with what we have and we have 19 different contracts and try to work those out to where they all end at the same time eventually. Or, and, and pay 275,000 over those five years. Or go out for bids because contracts over 50,000 over that period. We would have one contract for all machines. Either way, we go, they both said that they would do one contract for all machines. We'd know what exactly we have where because we'd actually have the spreadsheet. That would be one of the things that I'm not sure we have. And we would save at least 25,000 over five years. Potentially 60,000, but if we have to buy out some of the contracts, it could be down to 20. We could still save 25,000 over five years going out for bids.
So the one that's 215,000, we wouldn't have to go for bids?
No, we would because it's the contract over, the contract is over 50,000. And it would be the contract like. And I did check with the county attorney on that to be sure.
I thought it's 50,000 and two, five into 215,000.
Right, it's not per year. It's for the lifetime. Yeah. Because I was, I was wanting to do the same thing.
Is it not on the, on the bid, on the Bible order, on the lease? Have you looked at that?
I have not.
But it might be even cheaper. And it might be cheaper. And it might be worth looking.
The other thing you have to remember is GAZV 87 went into effect, so all these agreements have to be tracked in a different format, in a different way. With every item that's on the lease, that's why we were getting all the contracts together because we have to have all of those. So these smaller lease agreements, we used to not have to track them all, but now we have to track them, audit them. The auditors come and audit them, so you have 19 different ones versus one. But I have a question about Visual Edge. Because isn't this the company who said they could do the internet or the stuff, but then they said they can't do it? So now they say they can do this, but can they do this? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, absolutely. Initially, they, they told me three or four times, no, they could not consolidate into one contract. They went further up the chain and with someone who has been with Visual Edge but was not with Benchmark. And they had experience with that type of contract. Now, they are doing our phones.
Yes, but we went to biz prototype for our internet, or our.
Backup.
Yes, data recovery and IT management because they weren't able to do. Just curious. But for my input, I'd rather have one big contract, not 19 small ones.
Judge, I would. Can we do both? Go out for bids, I'd state it right now, but if I find it's on the byboard, then we just don't follow through with it.
I don't see what it would do.
We did. If you find it on the byboard and it's cheaper, then we have, we don't have to go through all these steps. So I make a motion that we go out for bids for contracts for one contract for all, all of our printing machine, copiers. And we also look at the byboard to see if there is a contract already in place that we wouldn't have to deal with that.
Okay, one question in that. If there's no byboard and we go out for bids, do you want the bids done by April 11th?
Yes, April 11th.
Thank you for putting up with that. All right, court to discuss and consider information from EMS director on financing options purchasing cardiac monitors. Hi, Dixon.
Judge, Commissioner's report. We appreciate your time. We had to kind of switch gears on our original plan for purchasing cardiac monitors and what the different company called. They offer a no interest finance plan for five years. This is how we purchased them back in 2009, I believe. It was through a five-year payment plan, no interest. They have the same program, the interest rate rates high. I'd like to try to keep as much money in tax class as I can. And we do have the money in tax class to pay for the whole invoice, but I would like your permission to go out for this five-year no interest finance plan. Purchase them instead of taking it all out at one time.
Especially with interest rates the way they are.
As interest rates go up and make more money on holding our money, then we can give it a.
Yep, as interest rates go up and make more money on holding our money than we do giving it away. I make motion that we allow our EMS director to, uh, finance the cardiac monitor.
Who's gonna sign the finance agreement?
The judge. I assume.
Is that in your motion?
For the court.
Is that in your motion?
Is that, is that necessary?
It's a lease agreement.
Okay, so yes, the county judge is deciding for the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Alright, court, discussing and seeing modifications, it's very kind of cool hours, plans, how are you today?
It's out of caution and safety mostly on my part. We've done it for years and it's worked. But it gets to the point, it's late, it's dark, it's loud. And just, I, I don't want something, uh, something bad to happen potentially during that last section, you know, timeframe that that court is open.
Right, for clarification, this is, so the after hours where you.
Yeah, it's two different.
Two different, two hours. The second one is what you're wanting to eliminate?
Yeah. And just see what y'all's thoughts were on that.
What, what are the times right now, six to eight?
Six to eight, then eight to ten.
Okay, so eliminate the eight to ten.
That's my initial thought.
How much money would that be losing?
It's a hundred dollars an hour, so potentially two hundred dollars per rental, you know, that we lose.
And what's our cost?
Well, you can't really count costs and revenues, unless your revenue, the budget is completely separate from costs. But we make forty thousand, we made forty thousand in twenty twenty-two, a little over forty one thousand in twenty-one. Twenty twenty, we didn't make anything because we were close because of COVID. Um, in twenty nineteen, forty thousand, twenty eighteen was less, but in twenty nineteen, we raised the rates from being fifty dollars an hour to a hundred dollars an hour. So we increased our revenue by ten thousand dollars by doing that. So there's also that option.
So potentially cutting it in half?
Additionally, swimming pool salaries cost us about forty thousand, I'm sure.
So it's about break even?
No, that's only salaries, it doesn't include chemicals and upkeep.
So it's costing us more than we're making?
Which everything the county does, definitely. Always in line.
How difficult is it to get lifeguards, because that is something we cannot do without? From eight to ten?
It's, it's possible, you know, and it's been possible in the past, but it's been done. You know, this is just my thinking, just safety, I don't wanna create hard feelings in the community, uh, taxpayers, you know, people. Cause there are a lot of people that, that do utilize that slot. But just, my main thing is, is safety and liability.
Do you know how, what the breakdown is, how many for the six to eight and how many eight to ten?
They're pretty much both filled up.
Okay.
Usually.
Every day of the week or?
Uh, but Monday and I don't believe we.
Every day you offer it?
Sunday.
Okay, so every day that it's offered?
But yeah.
I can tell you that on the first Monday of April, when she starts opening them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I can fill up, you know.
Yeah. And the amount I gave you is also after deducting paying back deposits, to those that paid the deposit, that is the revenue for the pool. But that would also include the revenue for the pool for the daytime.
Sure.
Okay, that's total revenue.
Pool, winter pool revenue.
So the other thing is then, cause he's talking about safety and lighting.
I mean, there is lighting, yeah.
We're going to need to install additional lighting to be safe, is that all you need?
It's lit good, but it gets loud and, uh, gets, don't wanna say chaotic, but you know.
Has any of the neighbors complained?
No, 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 no.
What kind of issues have you had with that's, that time slot, uh, as far as?
Well, I've heard people complain, you know, that, cause I'm not up there at that time, uh, that lifeguards aren't watching, that they're, uh, you know, basically goofing off.
Well, I think that's in every, all hours that the lifeguards are there, not just that time slot.
Yeah.
So maybe cameras, so that we can.
We have.
Identify those that are.
Yeah.
Fluffing off.
Yeah.
Visit with them about that?
What if we moved the times to what, five to seven to seven to nine, that'd give you an extra time earlier?
Yeah, man, that would be.
Because a lot of people rent for four hours at a time.
Sure. Yeah, uh, I'm not sure, cause that kicks into the normal, uh, time operation, you know, and hour. So I don't, but that's definitely an option.
Well, it wouldn't be dark by then.
No, 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 that would eliminate the darkness, you know, for sure. So it's just an idea.
So do we need to take away the county on Monday night and add two more slots for people to be able to come and have parties?
See very many people from the county go on that day, I've never been, so I don't know.
Me neither. Don't know.
I take my kids up there on buses, probably twenty to thirty on a typical evening is what I've seen. So.
And that is from what time to what time?
It's a two-hour slot, it's five to seven.
It's more.
Then, you know, if you get rid of that slot.
I thought it was to clean, um, like originally, the reason it was closed and open to employees on Mondays was to clean and take care of the chemicals on Monday.
After the, after the county employees are there?
No, that's what was being done during the day, and so there.
So it's closed, kind of.
It's closed during the, during the day, but it opens at five.
So it would be clean anyway, regardless if the county boys were getting that in Pantry Hall. So.
I just like if you get rid of that slot, you're gonna get rid of half the people that could have used it if they wanted to drive a slot. I think it's, it's a quality lab.
There's also, I mean, some people wonder, some of the churches, they rent it four hours a slot sometimes, and you can rent Sweetwater Pool, it's a Olympic-sized pool. Go to Big Springs, and I mean, if you want an hour slot like that, I just pray by cutting that, you're gonna deter other people from even renting it at all, that you would rent it for the four hours.
Now, I'm talking about.
But if you do five to seven, seven to nine, if in meet in the difference.
Sounds like it gets filled up really quick.
It does.
So, I mean, I'm not against the county employees having a good time, but. I mean, if it's revenue we're looking for, there's two more slots right there.
He has also, um, asked for increases.
Yeah, we, yeah, we discussed, uh, coming to you with, uh, rate increases, so that would generate more around here. Instead of eliminating that money spot, we could increase the rates, I think they're three dollars.
They're two, right?
Two dollars per second right now.
Yeah.
So, but then we can set another agenda on that.
You don't have to for that time?
No, for the rates.
What it costs to do.
Full rates. Increase those.
No, because your maximum part-time rate is already set at twelve, right?
Are you talking about full rate?
Full rate, full rate.
Full employee rate.
Okay.
Then we were also talking about bumping the lifeguards from nine to ten dollars an hour.
Right.
On a separate.
That's where you said two dollars an hour, I thought you were talking about that, not.
Oh, no, it's.
The rate for them to come in during the day.
Yeah, it's two dollars to get into the pool.
So, yeah, I mean, it's definitely could, I don't think a dollar an hour, or a dollar raise entry fee would, would, uh, would affect anybody. You know, I think about, I don't think there'd be any kickback, or much kickback for raising it from two to three.
There's always kickback on something.
Oh, yeah, but.
If we're gonna do that, why not raise the other ones up to a hundred and fifty an hour instead of a hundred?
We can definitely look at all of that, but we have to put it on the agenda for that specifically. And I could put that on the next agenda, so we got four, four opens. So what do you wanna do on the hours? You want to leave them as is or move it five to nine? I don't think there's any stomach to cut any hours, so do you wanna cut it to change it to five to seven or leave it done?
I think you're right, five to seven and no, I mean, no, five to nine, you're not, or five to nine, you're not gonna have any, uh, lights on, so it's gonna be cheap for run.
Yeah.
You don't have as much trouble with, with people that are trying to do something in the dark, I guess.
But you cut it five.
What are your current hours?
Your current, these current hours is still open, so you can't rent a pool for a private party, but a public is.
You would change it to four.
You have to close at four.
What are y'all open to right now?
Uh, twelve to six.
Twelve to six.
Or close it, you'd close at five.
And then the party's.
Close at five and the party's.
We have to, you know, we're open at eleven, you know, an hour early to sure to get it to that five, you know, and you wouldn't be cutting out the, the public anymore.
Right, hours.
Yes, yes, sir. So.
I like that idea.
So you open at eleven? What do you think, man?
Open at eleven, I think we can make it work. Every once in a while, there's, uh, I don't know, it's once a week or once every two weeks, the HMR people use the pool, print the pool for a slot in the mornings. But I think they're done by, I think they're done by eleven, so I don't think that should interfere. And we, lifeguards can get up there and clean stuff earlier, so we can just shift everything, you know.
And no more Monday, um, open seven days a week to rent?
I think they still need that day to clean.
Seven days to rent? Good evening, evening.
They're closing Sundays, correct?
Uh, Mondays.
Throw them.
Mondays.
Instead of having a county employee Monday, rent it instead.
You want to have them understood, right, that same five to seven, seven to nine, or Monday, that.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, that's it, that's what I need to make that for the employees. I, I don't, did you, what do you think?
I just, I think one quality will have to go away for our community, so that's why, that's my concern come in. I was trying to think and make sure, I know we, we rent it every year.
Yeah.
Um, just personally, and so if we rent it, we walked in, I was gonna say, if you're closing at the same time that you've got a party rented, um, sometimes we would show up, you know, right at ten minutes before, just to kinda decorate or something. And they're still, even if at times we've run into where they're still cleaning or picking up, so I think you're, as employees, your staff needs to make sure they have time to clean up and present a quality product to the community that's rented it. So I think just make sure your hours don't overlap for them. Since, as far as your lifeguards, I didn't hear the real safety issue other than a management issue, I guess with the employees, I didn't know the other, I didn't know the lighting or I didn't hear that concern, I didn't know what your safety concerns were.
Well, it's dark outside, you know, it's late, you know, so, but, whatever.
So seven days a week.
What about keeping the slot for county employees and then adding on, they're already there, the lifeguards are adding on from seven to nine for renting?
After their employees leave?
After their employees leave.
I really thought it was five to eight is what we had advertised in the past. I didn't know it was only two hours. All my signage that I've been told is five to eight.
You're trying to be tarred.
I'm just trying to get clarification, so if my signage has been incorrect all these years, I would have appreciated somebody saying something.
That's what we're doing. I'm glad there's five of us, I wouldn't wanna make it all, for sure. What do you think? So employees from five to seven, cover from seven to nine?
I agree. Cause that, that will actually even give more people the chance to have a spot.
Yeah, adds another spot every time.
Put those, works at every day, you drop out of there. Or someone, yeah.
What do you think?
We can make it work.
So that a motion?
Yes.
A clipper. All of that. Any clarification, really?
Um, I think I've got it, we're gonna, you're gonna switch the, um, regular hours on pool usage for the public from eleven to five. Rental will be five to seven or seven to nine. Employees on Mondays will be five to seven, after that, rental will be available from seven to nine.
You're good.
Pretty good.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Be there with your blood pressure cups.
And you're gonna put on the next agenda for change.
Increase on it, next agenda.
Yeah.
Increase rates.
Yeah. So you're gonna have. Alright, court, consider approval of line item transferation, budget minimum.
Sorry, no.
None? How about accounts payable?
We do have bills. Two hundred and sixty-three thousand, sixty dollars and eighty-three cents.
We managed that.
Yeah.
Last time was over two million dollars.
That's a motion.
Just to clarify.
Now, that's not transparency, I don't know what.
So last week was three weeks for the bills.
Yeah, exactly.
That's your fair.
Good job, Jeff. That's a lot of information.
What's that? Quick question for you. Oh, I just noticed on this, uh. Mine, in the one in the sheriff's office, it says get a gently used.
That was something they, that's, that was something they proposed. It's not, it's not necessarily their bid, in other words, it's not going yet, right?
Yeah, mine is, that's mine, it's always. I already have a gently used.
Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and go into executive session, uh, I'd like to do the personal matters first, it won't take but just a few minutes, so. Run you a little out for a few minutes and then we'll invite y'all, y'all back in, uh, as soon as we finish that. Rose?